The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Board of Education, February 6, 2019. Glad to have you all here and glad you're here to support public education in Bristol. You'll notice that a few of our commissioners are absent this evening. Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Cagiano are both traveling on business. And Mr. Grabowski is working and hoping to arrive here after 7:30 when he completes work. Tonight, we're pleased to have the Bristol Central Band here to perform the National Anthem, directed by John Buciewicz. I don't see him, but I'm sure he's around somewhere. And for those who haven't been here before, after the anthem is performed, we remain standing and then we will do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, students, for performing and sharing your talents with us this evening. We just learned last evening that one of our former board members passed yesterday, so he's not on your agenda, but we want to add him to our moment of silence. It's Janard Dolan, who served on the Board from 2011 to 2015, and was Vice President of the Board from 2013 to 2015. We also recognize Beverly Grabowski, who was a Board Member from 1983 to 1991, and then reappointed in 1995 to 2001. And she's the Board Chair from 1998 to 2001. She's also a former CAE chairman of the Board for two years in 2000 to 2002. We also recognize Sonia Petrov, who was a Secretary of the District from June of '51 to June of '61 at Southside, and then July of '61 to December of '62 here at the Board of Education, and then January '63 to December of '83 at Bristol Eastern High School, and December of '83 to October of '92 back here at the Board of Education. And also, we recognize a former principal, who was a teacher at Bristol Central. James Van Hook was a teacher at Bristol Central from '63 to '71, and then a principal at Bristol Central at '71 to '88, and a supervisor of special programs from '89 to '92. So please observe a moment of silence with me.
We're now going to recognize some staff and students for a variety of accomplishments. First, Bristol Eastern Senior Eliana Ribora. Eliana has been recognized as the All-Current Volleyball Player of the Year. And what makes this particularly special is her mom, Stacy Ribora. I don't think you're that quiet during game time. Her mom is her coach, so it's got to be that much more wonderful.
Thank you. It's something that many people don't get to understand, but I think that we both agree it's something we'll graduate.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Next, I'd like to ask Principal Scott Poddepp to join me. Green Hill School has had a variety of fundraising events spearheaded by kids this year.
Yes.
So I'm going to let you talk about your kids.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I'm here tonight as a very proud principal of Green Hill School, particularly tonight because I've got four gentlemen here who now for the past two years have taken it upon themselves to create a fundraiser that they have held through our school. Last year, they started a fundraiser for some of the victims of Puerto Rico and held a penny drive and raised over $600 for those people in Puerto Rico, which we sent and I know went towards water purification systems. Not to be outdone, this year they came up to us and said they would like to do another penny fundraiser for penny drive for South Park Inn in Hartford, one of the shelters in Hartford. And so these boys, every day, would go into school and go around our gigantic building collecting pennies for over a month. And this year, they totally outdid themselves and raised $1,041.52 for South Park Inn in Hartford. And if I could, I'd just like to call them up. Jacob Ducknowitz, Gavin Colvin, Noah Espinoza, and Jaden Hidalga.
So I know we've been teaching you about place value. So who can tell me how many pennies it took to get to that number? She's kidding. Well, they know place value, so they only have to add some zeros. The question is, how many? I won't put you on the spot. I shouldn't have asked you. Would anyone in our audience like to volunteer to answer that question?
Where's Mrs. Horton?
It's a lot. It's like 100,000 pennies. Where did you keep all of these pennies? And they're heavy.
What's your purse?
A very heavy bag.
But he also had a very helpful mom, who he could bring home installments to. So rather than wait until the last minute like we would at our school, they were depositing it in stages, so it wasn't as difficult.
Fantastic. I hope your generous hearts continue through the rest of your lives. And next, I'm going to ask our administrators from Chippens Hill Middle School, Marylois Fitzpatrick and Christie Richard Don to join me up here. There have been some issues with kids not getting along quite as well as they should and saying things about kids that maybe they shouldn't. And if you can remember back to your middle school days, thinking not much different than then. But they decided, with the help of kids and staff, to do something pretty special. So I'm going to let you talk about it and I'm going to boot it up.
So at Chippens Hill, we have core values that center around our phrase "Chippens Cares" and aligns to our district priorities. One of our priorities being full inclusion, excellence, accountability, and making sure that everything that we do in our education is equitable. So "Chippens Cares" stands C stands for cooperating with each other, and A stands for accepting differences. So the focus of this video that you're going to watch in a minute centers around accepting differences in who we are as people. And Christie, our Dean of Students at Chippens Hill, worked really hard. She's also the lead of our Climate Committee to put this video together, as well as Mrs. Silva and...
What else, Mrs. Silva?
And a few other teachers who worked together to put together a lesson where students school-wide participated in, talking about words and how words can hurt or they can heal. Teachers and students worked beyond the school day to get this video done, and I'm so proud of what they've done and what they are doing for Chippens Hill community. So I hope you look forward to it.
So after we watch it, we'll introduce the actors who are present.
Okay.
I'm going to start it over because... I ain't not a stranger to the dark. Hide away, they say, 'cause we don't want your broken parts. I'm learning to be ashamed of all the scars. Run away, they say, no one will love you as you are. But I won't let them break me down to dust. I know that there's a place for us, for we are glorious. When the sharpest words want to cut me down, I'm gonna send a blow right round my mouth. I am brave, I am bruised, I am who I'm meant to be. This is me. Look out, 'cause here I come. And I'm marching off to the beat I drum. I'm not scared to be seen, I make no apologies. Hey, I know my mascara is running. I thought watching it a couple times in advance would have helped, but it didn't. It's a beautiful message, and we have a whole bunch of beautiful people in this audience who helped make this happen.
That's one of the things I did notice when I watched this a million times, creating it, is we have some pretty good-looking kids at Chippens. And I'm going to have you guys stand up. So let's see, I have Jakai Hickey, seventh grader, if you want to stand up for me. Xavier Tate, sixth grade. PJ Kiss and the value of kids. Those are eighth graders. I have Emily Valentine, also a sixth grade. Charlie McCollum and Jarvis, seventh grader and eighth grader, too, too. Anthony Amos, seventh grade. I have Brian Chupin, right over here. Veronica Castro is also a sixth grader, I'm sorry, eighth grader. Michael Lopez and Matt Kears, you know, funny way for everyone. Gabriella, this is Gabriella Candace. Silva, we're going to turn it out without her, so I have to... But they did a really amazing job. They put a lot out there, and they chose what they wanted to share for some of us, who shared some sensitive information. I think it was very brave and very strong of them, and they did things that some adults can't do. So, well done, guys.
Thank you, students. You're really role models for all of us. So pretend it was right. I don't think anybody could see that and not shed a tear or two.
Yeah, you made me cry.
Now we get down to our... Do you folks want to stay for our meeting, or do you want to? I'll tell you what, I'll give you permission to leave if you would like. If you'd like to stay, you're welcome to stay. But if you feel like you'd like to go home and do homework or do whatever you want to do, make it your permission. Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of minutes when you receive the packets over the weekend. You have those minutes in front of you. Will there be corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, I will accept a motion verbally.
Someone?
If you have a second. Motion's been properly made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Stayed.
Any abstentions?
The Karens.
Yep, the Karens.
Now we go to committee reports. Our first committee report would be operations, where the Commissioner ends.
Thank you. The Operations Committee met on December 18 to discuss the items we were going to advance to the Finance Committee for placement on the Capital Improvement Plan, the Tenure Capital Improvement Plan. I want to thank the staff for doing a phenomenal job. Jill and Rob and Pete brought forth a tremendous proposal that would take advantage of federal funds that were available to us to enable us to purchase equipment to improve our Internet and our Wi-Fi and our technology in our classrooms at a discounted rate because part of the cost would be borne by grant money. So we're looking to improve the Smartboard technology in our classrooms, go to LEDs, which will both provide cost savings because they use less electricity and give our teachers better technology, upgrading our servers and our wireless access points and a bunch of other great stuff. So then a few other items out into the future, doing some roofs and removing some aging oil tanks. Nothing really exciting, but the technology piece is tremendous. So, thank you.
Any questions? If not, I think we're ready for our next report, which would be Finance Commissioner Beaver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The January report, which closes out December 31, 2018. We are over budget by close to $700,000. This is due to the increase in special services. We are currently up to 20% of our student population is receiving special services. We also have a slight overage in transportation. The good news is that food services is doing very, very well. We are running a surplus. It is wholly due to community eligibility provision. So not only are we running a surplus, but we have all of our children in those schools are able to eat breakfast and/or lunch, and that's a very good thing. If Mrs. Brown or Dr. Dieter have anything, any details you'd like to add, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I would just like to... I'll talk a lot. So, good evening, everyone. I think a detail that I would like to add, that we continue to report out on, is that marginal cost and what we're looking at. So when we look at newly enrolled students that have arrived, universal on an INP requiring services, we are currently projecting out, so through the remainder of this particular school year, it's important to note that these are all students that arrived after our budget was settled and resolved. The tuition costs associated for those students that require a program out of district is hovering at about $900,000. The associated transportation cost is about $612,000. So that's our marginal report that I've been updating, and we'll continue to revise that as enrollment trends up or down. We have been in a fairly stable enrollment of this past month, but I will caution you that that was the pattern last year and that we had a number of students move in in the late spring as well as over the summer. Be happy to take any questions there, perhaps. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Beaver. If not, we'll move right on to Student Achievement. Commissioner Doobie?
Yep. So the Student Achievement Committee met on January 28, and we've had a lengthy, interesting meeting. We discussed the new graduation requirements. It was a joint policy meeting as well. So I'll high-five my partner in crime over there, Tina Taylor. We did discuss the graduation requirement policy. The additions that are going to be coming up will be discussed later on this evening. We also discussed the magnet school programming. We discussed the Chippens Hill Middle School scheduling pilot, and we also had Larry Cavino come in and do an excellent presentation on the adult education program that we have in the district.
Any questions? If not, we will move right over to Policy. The last one, Commissioner Taylor.
Actually, Commissioner Doobie just covered it. Sorry.
Good. No questions, and we will move right on to the Chairman's Report. My report this month will be comprised mostly of the CREG report, and I'm going to turn Memorial Boulevard over to Dr. Dieter, who is the Chair of that committee. The CREG, we have been discussing for probably six to eight months, developing a resolution to ask the Legislature to support the magnet schools that are managed by CREG so that the tuition would not have to be increased to the local school districts. So we finally came to an agreement on what that resolution would look like, and we voted, and it was almost unanimous. There was two dissenters, but the rest of the council voted affirmatively, so now we give the tools to those that lobbied at Hartford to try to solve this fiscal problem of funding the magnet schools that were created as a result of Chef v. O'Neill. And the other thing I would just like to share with you, every year at this time, CREG gets a comprehensive annual financial report, and to most people, the finances of the organization. It's a very large organization. I'm not sure everybody really understands the scope of it. In fact, I learned, even though I've been going to those meetings for about 15 years, I learned something almost every time I go, but CREG is just one of the six regional education service centers that are developed in Connecticut. There's six of them. The state is kind of divided in half and then in thirds. And so the six of them, you may have heard of them. You know, everybody's heard of CREG, but there are other ones are Ed Advance, Eastcon, CES, ACES, LEARN, and LEARN. I think that's six. And so those resks were developed probably in the '60s to help school districts collaborate on those services that they needed, but maybe they didn't need every year, or they didn't have enough economy of scale to do on their own, like professional development or developing specific programs or other type of programs, like, for instance, they have a hearing impaired program at Soundbridge. So it would be inefficient for any school district to have a program like that on their own, so these resks were developed. It wasn't until much, much later that they started building magnet schools, and that was a whole different situation response to the Chef v. O'Neill case. And most of the other resks, other than CREG, don't have the number of magnet schools. Some of them have a magnet or two. But I did think you might find it interesting where our students who are opting to go to magnet schools are attending. And so I always find it interesting. That's the first thing I look at when I get the CAFR report, is I want to see where our students are going. And so I know you won't remember all these, but Aerospace has 13, Science and Innovation 22, Anna Grace Arts Elementary 15, Discovery 20, Glastonbury and East Hartford Magnet 2, Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts 11, Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts Middle is 10, Integrated Program Model is 1, IMS, which is a magnet school in South Windsor 1, Metropolitan Learning Center 3, Montessori 8, Museum Academy 6, Regio Magnet 26, River Street School 6, Soundbridge 3, and Two Rivers High School 6. So that gives you a real snapshot of where our students are attending.
The CREG magnets.
The CREG magnets. But I was going to get to that actually. And we only pay for CREG magnets. We do not pay for Hartford magnets, and we have a whole nother subset of students that do access magnet schools through the Hartford School System, the Hartford School District has some magnet schools as well, and we do not pay for them. And that was part of the arrangement when they set up that program. So that will be the conclusion of my report for CREG update. And now I'll ask Dr. Dieter to come to the mic again and give us an update on the Memorial Boulevard Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. The last meeting of the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School Building Committee, that's a mouthful, was January 24. Our agenda includes updates from the project manager, as well as the architect, construction manager, and then any other items that need to be discussed by the committee. At our last meeting, decisions of note were that we did take action on the enhanced commissioning agent. We selected a firm, Denzel Haywood and Shadford, and these folks will be with us for the duration of the project. Another notable event at the past meeting was that our architects provided us with very preliminary drawings, so we had an opportunity to look at some exterior mock-ups, as well as some different floor planning design options. And I stress that all of these things that are being shared are very preliminary, intended to create some conversation and some feedback and input from the multiple individuals on both this committee as well as the other committee, which is the Programming Committee. If you're interested in getting more information on the building project, I'm going to show you two locations where we're housing that information, so Clearinghouse or Info on So from our Board of Ed website, if you go to the Board of Education tab and you scroll down to the School Building Committees, you'll see that there are still committees, like the Forestville, ID Drive, et cetera. Some of these projects would need to be closed out, but the one that we're interested in is Memorial Boulevard. If you come over here, you'll see that we are able to access from this page. You can scroll in to find the minutes from our meetings, and if you go into the 2018 folder, you'll find both the agendas and minutes from all the previous meetings as well. If I back up a page... If I back up a page, so back up to... From here, you'll also see that we link out to the website on the city side. The Building Committee is a city committee. So, I wanted to share this with you because here we have, again, our schedule, our meeting calendar. And here you have a narrative of what we've been engaged in thus far. Okay. And if you scroll through, there's a table here that outlines some of our milestones as a committee, major decisions, and some of the heavy lifting that's been done with respect to the project. So, that information is out there, both on the Board of Ed website, as well as the city website. We're coordinating with the city so that our meetings and agendas will be posted through the city Agenda Generator so that you can sign up to get email alerts when the meetings are going to occur. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Dieter. We now move to our student representatives, and who is presenting this week from which school? So, we'll hear from Catherine first. Good to see you again.
So, good evening. And before I talk about what's actually going on at Central, I'd like to address what the board asked of us about school uniforms.
Could you speak into the mic just a little bit louder?
Yeah, that one. Sorry. The students we interviewed overall didn't mind the idea of uniforms, but they also took in much of its disadvantages. Many students valued the concept. That's probably why. So, many students valued the concept of expressing themselves through their clothing and the ability to have free choice in what they wear. But they also valued the simplicity of uniforms. They didn't have to worry about choosing what to wear every school day in the morning. There was also the financial perspective that the students took in. Uniforms can get expensive, and students would have to invest in recreational clothes on top of those expenses. Thirdly, some of the replies centered around one student response that stuck out to me, which was a question, is it a priority? Considering the impact on the school system, students felt that uniforms would be effective because they felt that uniforms didn't really have an impact on learning. And as for what happened at Central, you see how their annual talent show, Central's Got Talent, on January 26th. Their 28th was Junior Parents Night for all juniors, considering post-secondary education or apprenticeships for those jumping into the workforce. School counselors also come into classrooms during the day to talk to students directly. Earlier this past month, January 17th was the Coco and Cream Event for students to study for midterms. And there was a great turnout for both of the days, January 15th and 17th. For this month, the annual blood drive will be tomorrow, Thursday during school. Students 17 and older will be able to purchase, pay, and donate. Course selections have come up quick, and students can expect to meet with guidance to construct their schedules for the upcoming school year. And because of the cold weather we've had, buses for walkers are up and running. They run in the Walker District, those streets. Buses run to school and to home, and you can choose whether or not to walk or take bus. There will be a winter formal this year on the 23rd. And if students want to get a yearbook for the 2018-2019 school year, deposits are open. Crystal Central's Push-Ups for Peatheads is back for another year on Saturday, March 2nd, which supports the Summer Five Fund, and will run from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It's a great experience regardless of whether you stay the whole time or just a few hours. So, this month at Central is going smoothly, and we're looking for it to stay productive to the end of the year. Thank you very much.
Before you leave, I just wanted to go back to your survey. I don't know if you said it, and I missed it, or I didn't hear it. How many students were you able to survey?
Around 20 or so.
20 or so? Okay.
Yeah. I mostly went to a few each classroom.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, members of the board. I'll be presenting today on our survey on social media and dress code. So, besides the amount of people you see on the survey, I also asked other people, because some people just didn't want to take the survey. So, I did talk to certain people about what their opinions on this is. So, as majority of people that I've spoken to, and according to the survey, that most people do spend between 3 to 8 hours approximately on screen. And as I asked them questions on why they have increased time in the hours, a lot of them are saying that since our school is more going towards online assignments, the hours of screen time have increased. And this is some examples of most response. And a lot of people are saying that for entertainment, relaxation, communication, and keeping in touch with others. And then, with the response, many people said no, but there is quite a bit of people, based on the survey, that who does say yes, because of how social medias have impacted them on like, they're becoming depressed and that they just didn't feel comfortable sometimes when they see certain news that's going on on social media. And that's some reasons other people are saying that, their fear of being missed out on the news. And then they compare some others, peer pressure. And then, with the survey on how personality or confidence all will have shifted during the use of social media, almost about half of people, they say yes, and some people say no. And then, there's like, a lot of people are saying that there are some positives, but also negatives with using of social media as their confidence all have shifted. Some positives are the connection with others, and they can find self-confidence through the positive comments others made, and the nice comments. And then the negative is how the social media always demonstrate the negative of the body image of, oh, you have to be skinny or like, show a certain way to be a model or certain type. And then also the insecurity of people. I personally feel, and also many people who I asked also said yes to the answer because they feel like if we're both either using cellphones, or like, some of us using cellphones, we still be able to talk to each other. When they ask us each other's questions, we answer. And sometimes we know that it's when it's appropriate to put down our phones. So, we don't really think that affects the relationship. Some people does, a majority of people said yes, it does affect the ability to use time efficiently because we will often get sidetracked when there's notification, like, say Snapchat always notify us, and then we always get distracted because we want to keep up our streaks and stuff like that. And then, some people answer no because they know when's the appropriate time to use cellphones. And then 10% answer sometime because they will always focus on what is happening. They will always focus on what is happening on social media because they have their ability to control themselves. The survey that we did on how young kids should be, if they should be limited, majority of people said yes because the age, also because the addiction to cellphones and the overuse. And then, they were also saying that how much the kids now rely on cellphones for answers and things like that. And then, they will lose time to be with friends. And then, they were focused too much on schools. Some said no because they have the ability to control themselves, and with the device usage, then they will be fine because it's also technology that helps them to learn. So, now goes to the spooning of the survey. Most people, majority said no, but some does say yes. And then, with the reasoning, I asked certain people, they were saying that there are both pros and cons. The pros are that they won't be judged on what they're wearing, and that they don't need to worry what to dress up. And then the cons are that students who like to dress up, who like to spend the time to dress up to look unique or like pretty, something like that, that they just can't do it because of how the rules, we have to be safe thing. And then also the cost of the uniform. Yeah. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I asked the students to do a survey about uniforms because I had been back and forth with a parent who was really concerned about his children and how much time it takes them to choose what they're wearing, and they're over-concerned about how they look at school. And I don't know, is that parent in the audience tonight? I thought he was here, but he may have left with the rest of the group. After three conversations, I found out he was actually talking about second-grade children. And that was extremely disturbing to me. I assumed that the kids were in middle school or high school by the back and forth that we had. And so, I wanted to get the opinion of some of our high school students about how they feel about uniforms because what you look like at the high school level, I thought, would be more concerning to kids. But it is something that we should be talking about. For some families, uniforms actually are budget-friendly in comparison to some of the clothes that children will ask their parents to buy for them. So, I thank you very much for getting us some data on that.
Just aside from both, all three of you, is it easy to do a survey, or do we have a mechanism? Can you use any of the school technology to do the survey? Or is it hard to? It sounds like you didn't have as many respondents as you'd like.
I feel like it really just depends on what the... Like, some people just don't even check their emails. Some people are just too lazy to respond to the questions. It really just depends on if it's just multiple choice. Like, some of these, you did have to have an explanation on, but a lot of kids are like, ooh, that's just too much work, sorry.
As I talk to our friends, the person that asks, in like, conversation, they have said that because of how many questions there is, and it's not a yes or no question. It makes them feel like, oh, it's just too much work. And some people value privacy, and even though we tell them that it's, like, they won't be told by names, like, we won't tell the names of them, but they're just afraid of the, like, they're being seen because we can see the survey results, so they're afraid that we will know who they are.
And we actually try to simplify the questions, or make less if we can, just so it's easier in one whole response to answer it, so.
Are you using your own email, or are you using one of the known survey, you know, surveys?
Yeah. I think we're using, I think, Ms. Kennedy's.
Yeah, our librarian, like, she can send this email to everyone in our school.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
For me, I actually emailed Mr. Maninter asking about the survey. And we need to bring, I didn't know this, but for every survey we take, we need to send a form home for students. And I was unaware of that, so it was really good I got to learn that.
That happens to be a board policy.
Which is good, now I know. But I did find it easier to just talk to students because they could expand on the topic however they liked. And not to say that multiple-choice surveys were bad, but usually they would talk about their own opinions, or give stories, or their own experiences with it. One student, a few students actually that I talked to, did have uniforms at their other schools. And so, they were able to offer more insight. So, I thought that was really good.
Thank you. Now, super technical, just your survey.
Good evening again. So, to complement Dr. Dieter's report on what the Building Committee has been doing, there has been a group of teachers and administrators, also working with the architects, on a programming committee. And it's important to explain what that actually is. It's not deciding necessarily what will be taught on a day-to-day basis. At the beginning of a project, we work with architects so they know what rooms that need to be built into the school. So, you have to develop programs that you know. For example, when the decision was made for high school students to get Core at their home high school, that took 12 classrooms, I think, of what we would need, which allowed larger spaces for other parts of the program. So, at the moment, and this really came from some teachers, talking about possible pathways for the creative arts industry. And we've talked about the fact that this isn't a performance school per se. A lot of the negative feedback we got was that we were in a room, the theater programs were in a room, the music programs were in a room, the art programs. That really isn't what this school is all about. They're looking at having a creative construction pathway, a visual arts pathway, musical arts, television, video, and theatrics, possibly a culinary and food service, entrepreneurship strand, entertainment, sports, events management, advertising, marketing, and communications. Because that's what I've spoken to you about in the past, is that we're talking about what happens behind the curtain. And when you think about going to a theater and seeing a performance, there is a hospitality section where you might get food. And someone is designing programming for that, or deciding what food to serve at what cost. The publicity that goes out to put on a performance is a whole nother, whole line of work that adults do in that industry. Now, we haven't chiseled this into stone, but the architects have had the opportunity, after hearing these kinds of ideas, about how to construct many of the spaces in the school. And so, we're still not done with either part of it. Eventually, programming will mean curriculum development. That'll come much further down the line. But for the most part, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow afternoon. It'll probably be the last programming meeting until the architects move further along in the process. I attended a legislative breakfast a couple of weeks ago. Actually, Commissioner Pacchiano was there as well. And we heard some updates on bills that will be presented in committee, and then possibly to the whole legislature. There is a bill to set the graduation date for seniors as a fixed date because, as you know, if any of you have been involved in Project Graduation, you don't know if it's going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And sometimes you lose some of the act you were going to have. So, there's a proposal that seniors might be able to graduate before they reach 180 school days so that districts can fix that date. Some districts rent the bushnell, for example, and it may not be available on another night. And so, that's one. There are multiple bills about the state needing to address the cost of special education. Some of them reduce the threshold for excess costs from four and a half times to three and a half to two and a half. There's another bunch of bills that talks about having a fund for special education. The Connecticut Finance Project had come and met with us and talked about that, I think, maybe two years ago now. Another one that we would like to see passed is that the executive branch can make a reduction to ECS during the school year. We had to deal with that a couple of years ago. We lost about $750,000 worth of funding that we had not been prepared to lose. The environmentalists want to get rid of plastic straws and styrofoam plates and other microplastics. This would have a cost to our food service department because we use all of those. Not saying that that's not something we should do. But that's, there's a national movement because we may know that wildlife is very much affected by the use of those. And begin proper throwing away of those kinds of things. People leave them in the environment instead of taking them to a proper location. Representative Padlock-Tamato reached out to me. We're going to be meeting with, actually, Dr. Probon and I, to talk about some of the bills that are of importance to us. And then she wanted to get our opinion on some bills that are going to be dealt with by the Education Committee, and she's a member of that committee. Just wanted to make sure that we didn't stay. And as I do every month, I do an update on our district priorities.
While you're doing that, can I just ask you a question about the... Because I got lobbied today about this from Ellington Board of Ed about the early release for seniors. And I know Massachusetts has our early release, so their students don't have to... And I know Massachusetts has our early release so their students don't have to go the whole 180 days. Does administration perceive that to be a problem or are you okay with that?
I don't see it as a problem other than it will impact final exam schedules. And as Superintendent Ellington has said, oh, this has no cost to it. I don't, I don't think that's absolutely true because it does affect three other grades of students. And I think though, if they move it far enough into June and assume we're going to have, let's say, three snow days, that it will not be harmful to our students if statewide it has a greater good. But what we don't want to see happen is we're going to have an after graduation party. And there are days between when high school actually finishes and when graduation occurs. Because that defeats the purpose.
So you're saying that they're talking about a statewide graduation date?
Correct.
I thought.
No, Boards of Ed would set a date in their town.
Set their own.
But it's a fixed date that you don't change. Normally, it's your April board meeting where you choose the last day of school after we think the majority of weather has passed. But if we were to choose, let's say, the 13th of January or June or the 14th, we may have six more snow days or we may have none. And so there could be a gap where school was finished, where we did our 181st day, the graduation wasn't going to happen for a couple of days later. So that's what could happen.
Well, I presume they would write the legislation so we wouldn't have to utilize this if we chose not to. I mean, we could just keep doing things the way we've been doing them.
I would imagine so. It would be permission to do so should you choose.
Yeah, I think it more is for those people that are renting facilities that are very costly. And, you know, they can't get a second date oftentimes, so that's the problem. Some people talked about, you know, college orientations or interfering on occasions and some other.
And boot camp, that students who join the military and they want those students to participate in graduation. And that's really a pretty notable cause for doing this.
Yep.
To allow those students who are going to go to boot camp this summer, they actually leave about 10 days before the end of the school year. Oh, it depends on whose calendar you're talking about, but it is several weeks before.
I do recall, I went, I did leave in Massachusetts and we did get released before the rest of the school did and it was, I didn't ever saw it as a problem. I thought it was pretty good, I guess. You know, we probably got released 10 days before the rest of the school did. And, I mean, we were doing, we had activities to do, but it wasn't like, we didn't take exams or anything as seniors. We didn't have exams, you know, as long as you.
Must have been the seventies.
Yes, it was, it was, a long time ago. You have to remind me. Thank you, I like that.
So one of our board and school district priorities is to inspire and cultivate talent. And during the past month or so, we as a central office team met with every one of our administrators who is supervising a teacher who is not tenured. And they meet with us and tell us why this teacher has the potential to have exemplary practice because that's really our standard. We want every single teacher who teaches our students before they reach tenure, which is after four years, to be, have the potential for exemplary practice because our kids deserve that. And with that conversation, sometimes there are teachers that aren't a good fit for our district and they either choose to live on their own or we give them feedback that says it's just not working. We've been creating training opportunities for our non-certified staff. We don't really talk about that too much. We're always talking about our certified staff, but there are many things that they need to learn, particularly in the business office, when it comes to using some of the software applications that we have. And Mrs. Brown is working on making sure people are cross-trained. So if someone goes down with the flu, we can still pay people. And it's important that we have more than one person who know how to use a system. Dr. Galloway has been involved in the minority teacher recruitment committee and that in many ways gives us an advantage because he knows in advance who the students are, who may be potential candidates for us to hire or interview and hire. And this summer or before the next school year starts, special services staff will be training at least one of their teachers in what's known as tier three literacy intervention. It's when a student in the regular classroom has not been successful, has had additional instruction, that has not been successful. And there are certain kinds of reading programs that are used with special education students which are effective. And we need to have people who are trained in those programs. And so they'll be doing that throughout this year and into the summer. Improving our organizational operational effectiveness, as you're aware, I froze the spending on non-essential items. And I have to tell you, last year when we did this, it generated about $300,000. It's not the kind of money you would think because our schools have already purchased a lot of what they already needed to implement. And so certainly that is money that we'll need, but I wanted you to be realistic about how much money that generates. We did have some leaks. Mr. Godet's here. He was one of the schools that had a couple of leaks. Maybe in your own homes, you had leaks that you've never seen before with the kind of rain that we had a couple of weeks ago. And so that has all been taken care of by our facility staff. We participated in a triennial food service review by the state child nutrition team. We have some remediation that we need to do. We're taking care of that. And hopefully by March 1st, we will have turned in all of that information to them. And there'll be a policy that will come before a policy committee related to civil rights complaints having to do with food service. We're going to be going Google. The whole district is going Google. That means our mail, our file systems, there's a little bit of panic going on because the way we have our files right now, it's not the same organization in Google. And so we have an expert here, Mrs. Forten, who has really shown us what Google can do. And now we need to get everybody to understand that so that by the time we start school next year, people aren't saying, where are all of my files? Because we're hoarders educators, even our files and the way we organize our files. So it's going to be an adjustment. But we don't have to pay for Google. And right now we pay for the platforms that we use. And so we're always looking to save money as long as it's effective. Oh, I already, actually I have that twice on there. Community engagement, we're very excited to, Dr. Probona and I met with a couple of folks from Harvard State who told us that the Barnes Foundation has made a donation so that our seventh graders can participate in an artist in residence program. And they also were receiving a book. The book was chosen by our staff. Now all we need to do is get the number of books we need and we'll be rolling on that one. As you know, we have a dress down day every month. This January dress down was for the Friday backpack program. That's a program where literally a backpack is filled with food and given to a child who we know may not have food in their home for the weekend. It's an amazing program and our staff did a great job. $2,640 will buy a lot of food for those backpacks. And another goal that we have is to get our administrators, our teachers and other staff more engaged in the community. And so we have, and this is not all of them, but we have staff members who participate either on a regular basis or occasionally. SEPTA, which is the special ed parent teacher, parent teacher organization. Bristol Cares, which is a committee that has people from every social service group in the city that meets about issues like homelessness and tries to find solutions from each of those members. I sit on the Chamber of Commerce Board. We have folks on the Bristol Board, Boys and Girls Club Board and the Juvenile Review Board. Learner focus, this is really why we exist. Currently, every single course we have, and you've approved those curriculum aligned with our vision of the graduate. We have at least one high quality common assessment and those common assessments are given in every school at the same grade level and subject so that we can compare and we can really look at our instruction and our curriculum and see whether or not we need to make some changes. The Chromebooks, you heard all about, you know, in three years and you become obsolete. Well, some of them actually, it's four or five years depending on the number on the Chromebook. But we're repurposing those to use in classrooms where we're not doing standardized testing. So we're not throwing them away. We just can't use them for state testing, but we certainly can use them for a whole lot of other great uses. And our district continuous improvement team, used to be known as the district data team, today we met and we were looking at the early indication tool, which is something the state has on a secure website where it identifies students and pulls together data. For example, a student who has, is chronically absent, who scores relatively low on certain assessments, maybe English is not that student's first language, and pulls together lists of students by school of students who may be at risk for failure so that staff can really look more deeply into all of the information that's available on that student. And it certainly is a time saver, but once you identify your students, you then dig into, let's say, a list of 10 versus a list of 50. So it's a great tool and that's my update. Any questions?
There's no questions, then we're ready to go to the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull any of the items on the consent agenda out for Little Scott? If not, then I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been properly moved, is there a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do you have any comments or questions? If not, if you're ready to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We're now down to public comment. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak from the public?
I think they all signed in their children over here.
I presume that, I can't even read that. Ramos, is that it? Do I have the name of Ms. Ramos here? Okay, and the Gibbs I know, so I know they're not here. So, okay, does anybody else who didn't sign up wish to speak from the public? If not, I think we're ready to move right on to deliberate items. Our first item is 10.1, 2019 Program of Studies, and I understand Mrs. Forten is going to pitch in on that one?
Yes. Mr. Fermaninter was going to present tonight and I don't think he's feeling well. So the purpose of bringing a program of study is for your information. As you know, everything that's within the program of studies has been approved by the Board of Education or will, is pending approval in this upcoming spring. The program of studies is used by our students from grades nine through 12 for course descriptions and details of things such as their graduation requirements. On a regular basis, our OTM supervisors, department chairs and school administrators review all of the curriculum that has been updated and ensure that the course descriptions, prerequisites and all of the information about those courses is contained within the program of studies. And once a year, we bring that forward for your information as a review. So within our program of studies for the 1920 school year, you'll see that new courses that you recently approved, such as accounting two and introduction to manufacturing and design have been included for student selection next year. You'll also see courses that we're intending to bring forward to the Board of Education this spring. And so they're in the program of studies pending our approval. Some of those courses include sports and entertainment marketing as a brand new course and a revision to information processing two. You'll also see, and this will come up later in the agenda tonight, that we've mapped out four students with their potential courses study will be based on the revisions to their graduation requirements because our students will be impacted by those requirements when they enter as freshmen next year. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
No questions, I think it was a very thorough session.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Galloway, I guess you're doing item 10.2?
Yes, sir. Hopeful that you can access the calendar on your laptop. It looks a little different. We are trying some new, a new way to display the information, trying to update ourselves a little bit, create greater efficiencies. So what you have access to is the 2019, 2020 calendar and the calendar for the following year, the 2020, 2021 calendar. This is distributed to you for, it's a draft for your first review prior to any further dissemination out to the larger community, the unions, PTOs, et cetera.
The big change is that we will be, in 1920, will be starting school after Labor Day?
That is correct. And actually, the, if you go in 2019, 2020, you'll see teaching day, two professional development days and school for students starts after Labor Day on the 7th.
Dr. Galloway, a quick question. Go ahead. Sorry. On the calendar for 2019 and 2020, it has September 4th in the middle with a little bit of gray saying it's a professional development day. That's a Wednesday. Is that our normally shortened Wednesday schedule or is that like a half day schedule?
Normal Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
No. Shortened?
Shortened.
I'm sorry, half day schedule. We went back and forth a couple of times.
Okay.
There are, there are three half days within the proposed calendar. One on September 4th, one on October 2nd, and one on March 4th, which is the difference from last year's calendar to this year's calendar. On those Wednesdays, there would be an early release so that teachers can engage in professional learning.
Can you just confirm the first days of school for both years? Because I thought what you said, maybe I misheard.
Okay, for 2019, 2020, teachers would come in on the 27th, 28th and 29th. Students would start on September 3rd.
So that's going to be after Labor Day?
Yes.
Okay. And then the next year, it's before Labor Day.
Yeah.
Because Labor Day goes to the end of the week again.
Yeah. 2020 to 2021, the first day of actual school is August 31st, which is before Labor Day. Sorry.
Yep.
A whole week.
So this will be the first time the kids will start in a full five day weekly?
Every seven years, every seven years. Okay.
I'll fill my own benefit. Can you just explain to me the reason, although I understand it's for professional development, but why we moved to a half day dismissal for those versus how they've been handled in the district previously?
So this adds six more hours to our professional development opportunities for our staff because we have a couple of professional learning experiences towards the beginning of the school year that compete with one another. So our principals would like to have their staffs to themselves, but district priorities tend to request to use or develop staff in either curriculum areas and or moving to Google or anticipating some professional learning needs. So we'd like to build them in proactively to meet the needs of the teachers because towards the beginning of the year is when they're going to need to be proficient with the new application system. with the new application system.
Which ultimately means six less hours with the students though, correct? Because these days still count as full day for the students?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Dean?
I can't let this go by as I never do, but I'm hoping that maybe sometime in the future we can start having some conversations about possibly doing away with Columbus Day and looking at other options. Can't let it go.
So just change the name. I don't think we can do away with it because I think it's a state holiday.
It's not, we don't have school.
You don't?
No.
There's some, some district type school.
Yeah, the only days we have to close are called the December and January holidays, otherwise known as Christmas and Dr. King's birthday.
Got it.
Also, in that same vein, with our population changing a bit, have we thought of maybe doing a survey to see who celebrates King's Day? If it's been a problem, I know in the last two years it's been on weekend, so we haven't really seen absences, but maybe this year keep a track of who's out, who you know that has been a problem with King's Day. I think that needs to be changed.
Do we know?
Sure.
Any other questions? For the first draft? Okay. Move on to the next.
Okay.
Okay, I'll switch gears then, ladies and gentlemen, to the enrollment report. I hate to be anticlimactic. I will go school to school, but since October to this point, there are 100, we're 107 kids down from October. So I'll just lead in with that. As I go into, on the first page you'll see Edgewood School. And I usually just highlight the areas on the grade levels where there might be some concern or where they might be capped or where we might watch very closely. And for Edgewood, we're watching kindergarten in grade four. And from your, the total number in Edgewood as of this reading is 279 and in October it was 276. Moving to Hubble, there are no concerning the capping of sections, no concerns at this point. And when we ran this report, it was at 422 and in October it was 414. Green Hills going from K to five. None of the sections are capped. And the October, we moved from 629 as of today's report and in October it was 625. Ivy Drive, grade two is the grade that we watch closely. And the running as of today is three, I have to take glasses, on and off, 393. And in October, 386. And I'm going to say this out loud. It might only be you currently, no issues, so I hope I don't jinx myself. And 367 and in October it was 366. Moving to Southside, there are three grade levels that we are watching. Kindergarten, grade one and grade two. Current numbers by 13, in October it was 507. Moving to Stafford. No serious concerns with any sections or grade levels in Stafford. Currently 372 and October's 374. West Bristol kindergarten is a watched grade. Current number 590, October 581. The actual K5 class size average is currently 19.6, which is a slight decrease based off of the first thing that I said of going down 107 kids. Moving to the middle school area. At Chickens Hill for grades six, seven and eight. Current number 797, in October it was 782. At Green Hills, current number 678, 304, in October it was 300. Northeast, 507, October 501. West Bristol, 331, in October 330. Total change for those schools, current number 1938. In October it was 1913. Moving to the high school, I'll just give you the totals differences from today for Bristol Central. 1177, in October 1176. At Eastern, current 1078, October 1080. Other than the slight decrease in 107, 107 students, are there any questions so far?
Yes, Doctor, is this pretty standardized comparing these variances to surrounding towns? Is this just par for the course, the way, you know, student populations change?
I would say it's par for the course. I do, we do talk about where students are coming from. Pretty much from month to month, so I'll be happy to share that with you to shed a little bit more light. We actually had students transfer into the district, five from being homeschooled, but that was interesting. From Massachusetts, three students, New Britain, three students, Jersey, three, New York, six, Southington, six, Wisconsin, three. So we look at it all different ways.
And the numbers may change by a few, but that's really not the case. You might have 20 students leave and 23 move in.
So you're looking at a net based on that. Any other questions?
You already know what I'm going to ask you, don't you?
I think I do, yes.
So I just need to do my due diligence to make sure that we're monitoring and doing all we can with the class sizes at West Bristol.
Absolutely. I speak regularly with Michelle and off of our initial conversation. I did go to West Bristol, to all of those classes. I saw the setup. And it wasn't a bad setup. They have long tables and chairs and they work in work groups. The rooms are pretty large. You know, I'm not going to say there's not a lot of students. You know, I'm not saying that.
You're speaking for the science class.
Right. Well, actually, I went in every classroom on that floor.
Okay.
And spent some time in there just so I could see what it was like when the students were actually in the room. And they have a, they have a system. Things are spread out. They work collaboratively. The teachers have done a really nice job in establishing the protocols and procedures. When kids come in the room, kids understand that they have a job, a responsibility, a due now to take care of. So the educational professionals have really shown a lot of initiative in organizing the space and creating time on task activities for kids to come in so there's bell to bell activities.
Thank you.
No problem, but I I knew it, I could feel it.
I knew it was coming. It was just a matter of time.
Any other questions? If there are none, then I'll take a seat. Thank you.
Yes, that's me.
Okay.
Actually, I should have given it to Mrs. Brown, but I'll take care of it.
Okay.
The roof project at Chickens Hill Middle School has been completed. The committee meant to close it out. And now all that is left is a resolution by the board to close it and then we can file it with the state. So resolve that the Board of Education accepts the Chickens Hill Middle School Roof Project located 551 Peastale Street in Bristol, Connecticut, as complete to forward and to file the final paperwork with the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, Office of School Construction, Grants and Review.
Wasn't that your roof, Mrs. Bevart?
No.
I'm doing Southside. We're just starting, but I'll move this.
I'll second.
For a second?
And then we need a roll call because it's a resolution.
Okay.
Commissioner Dubey? Commissioner Gantone?
Yes.
Commissioner Grabowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hens?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Bevart?
Yes.
Chairman Wilson?
Yes.
So now we move to item 11, graduation requirements. And I think Mrs. Fortin and others are going to come and illuminate information to us.
So this is the second reading of the policy. We had our first reading of the graduation requirement policy that are joined policy and student achievement committee meeting last month. The reason why we have to revise our policy is the state has mandated new graduation requirements for the class of 2023. And believe it or not, the class of 2023 will be freshmen next year. As students begin their program of study, we like to outline for them what their course of study will be. And as you've heard from our high school representatives this evening, scheduling is soon beginning. In addition to the requirements the state has mandated in terms of courses that students need or credits that students need to earn, the state has required additional language that needs to be included within the policy regarding mediation and ways in which students can earn credit. And you'll see those revisions on page four in the policy. You'll notice within the revisions that we've made that our graduation committee made up of our high school administrators and OTL supervisors, that we've mapped out the graduation requirements for every graduating class. You'll see that there are several tables of requirements and that's because we don't want to change a course of study midway through their high school career. So we have varying graduation requirements based on what the state requires for each graduating class. You'll also see within the revision that we have more clearly defined what our student success plan requirements are and the Connecticut seal of illiteracy. As well as we've updated the evidence-based reading and writing and amount standards for graduation so that they can align with the information we currently have available to us. Both of those performance expectations will no longer be expectations for the class of 2023 due to the changes in state legislation. These standards will be replaced by a credit that students will earn in a mastery-based diploma assessment or culminating project. We wanted to point out some of the more significant changes more deeply. So Bristol has always monthly has had very high expectations for graduating from our schools. We've long had a graduation requirement of 25 credits, 25.25 credits. And at one point we even had higher than that. So for us, the changes in the state legislation haven't really forced us to add more courses into our program of study, rather they've forced us to reorganize the way that we structure our credits. There are two new requirements that we will need to address and both of those requirements fit nicely within our Bristol vision of the graduate. Those changes are a requirement of world language, one credit in world language for all students and that we provide at least one credit in health. And we both, within our vision of the graduate, we do address the need for our students to be global citizens and to have a background in health literacy. There won't, there won't be a budget implication for the addition of world language. And talking with the high school principals and looking at our current section enrollment, they may have to make some tougher decisions about what sections they can offer or how they're grouping sections together. Some of our world language classes right now, we run a French one academic level class with a French one accelerated class within the same section. They might have to look at doing more of that down the road in order to accommodate the 30 to 60 students that we have that have not, as seniors right now, have a credit of world language. We're using that to, as a baseline. Current seniors don't need to have a baseline credit. The health requirement, there will be a potential budget implication for the PE in health. While we don't anticipate the need for additional staffing to meet the health requirement until 21, 22, some PE classes next year may be larger than what they are this year. And the reason for that is all of our students next year will be taking, our freshman students will have a half credit, the plan is for them to have a half credit in health as a freshman so that as they're entering the high school, they have the opportunity to talk with a certified health teacher about the issues that they'll face. And then the second half credit of that health class will come in when students are juniors. Again, a time when they're going to be facing some tough decisions in their life and can use the assistance and knowledge that a certified health curriculum administrator would give them. I wanted to address also two concerns that came up within the student achievement committee. The first being what would appear is fewer uncategorized electives for students to take. Because of the way that we have to categorize our credits, nine credits within humanities, nine credits within STEM, three credits within physical fitness and health, and then mastery-based credit diploma and world language, it looks like we have 4.25 credits that are uncategorized. They are completely open and students can pick from any category. I wanted to find out that because of the categories of courses under humanities and STEM, some of those 10 credits of uncategorized electives that we've had before are now in those elective areas. So students now have to take up to one art class, up to two CTE classes in addition to the four uncategorized classes that they have. I also wanted to make sure that you are aware that students can take up to 32 credits throughout their course of study in their, from grades nine through 12. So you have students who have 32 credits. Those that aren't including that fourth, they can take up to 11 credits that are uncategorized if they take the full schedule all four years. In addition to the four other required electives that they need to take. If students, which is a more likely scenario, have one study hall in their schedule for their years during their high school career, they still have to take those four electives. That's the science elective that they need to take. They'll have to take two CTE, one art and they'll have seven uncategorized electives. So even though the chart shows that there's four uncategorized electives, it's far more likely that our students are going to exceed that number by really engaging all the elective opportunities we have. I'm going to pause there in case there's any questions about that one before we get to chemistry as a course, which I believe is the second issue that came up in student achievement. Okay, so then with that, I'm invited, since there were some questions about chemistry as the third required course, but the state does not require chemistry to be the third course and they do require the three credits. I invited Dr. Reckenberg, our 612 science supervisor, to speak to that concept.
Good evening. I wanted to share with you a little bit about the vision of the graduate and some of the pieces and how they're aligning with science. So you know the vision of the graduate in terms of academic knowledge and skills, but I really did want to point out the reasoning effectively, systems thinking, making sound judgments and decisions, identify, define and solve authentic problems and essential questions. Because these are extremely well-aligned with science instruction and the science standards as we move forward. So I'm just laying this out as we start to talk about why chemistry. There are 71 mandated standards that we have to cover in high school. And of those 71 standards, 24 of them fall within physical sciences. The physical science standards themselves cover like physics standards, courses in motion, as well as the chemistry standards. Life science is really your biology course. Earth science standards, there's 19 of those. And then the engineering, technology and application of science for, there are four. As the state moved forward with adopting these standards, we looked into the research and wanted to figure out what are the best course progressions in order to bring forth to schools. In the past, the state of Connecticut has only required two science credits, one of which had to be biology. With the adoption of the state standards in 2015, two courses in science was no longer going to allow us to achieve was no longer going to allow us to achieve those 71 standards. So we had to move into a pathway that had three courses. The first option put forward by the NRC and the Next Generation Science Standards was the conceptual progression model. That model has integrated courses as freshmen, sophomore, and juniors. To the state and many of the school districts around the area, that was not going to be an acceptable choice because of the number of students that we have moving on into STEM fields or medical fields. That was not going to show up on their transcripts in a way that was going to get them into med school and juniors. The second option was to have a physical science course in your freshman year, followed by biology, followed by earth science. In Bristol and in the surrounding state of Connecticut, there are very few earth science certified teachers. In, I want to say, 2004, earth science was removed from the Connecticut framework for science, and as a result, many of our, the colleges and universities did away with the certification courses leading into earth science. Because of that, we do not have certified staff to teach an all-earth-science course to the number of students that we have to cover. The final pathway that was put forth by the NRC was a modified science domains model. This fit perfectly within the state of Connecticut because it gave us the option to embed the earth science components within those core courses of a physical science course in the ninth grade, followed by biology course, followed by chemistry. So what you have now is, in your ninth grade course, you have physical science, which is really your, your kinetics and your physics component with some earth science components and some astronomy. In biology, we are looking at those life standards, those life science standards, but also bringing in some of the earth and space science in order to really talk about, you know, where life can happen and why and some of those environmental impacts. And then with chemistry, we're also able to embed some of those earth and space standards through the formation of matter and solar system. Questions about standards and where everything's coming from? The other important piece about chemistry is chemistry informs everything that we do, from making medical decisions and being knowledgeable and asking the appropriate questions, from environmental issues, looking at pollutants and cleaning up pollutants, thinking about all of the different things that are impacting society today. We want our students to really be knowledgeable and how to approach those, those concepts. Cooking, cleaning, all of those things. I hope we all know that we should never combine blache and ammonia to clean, so again. So the shift, one of the other pieces that I want to point out is that the NGSS and the standards for science are really different from our traditional experience in the science classroom. NGSS is about students doing the heavy lifting, about them investigating, asking the questions, and getting their, their hands dirty in this. It is not, I actually have this infographic for you. It is not about memorization. It's not about doing 35 stotheometric problems at night for homework. It's about learning to use a periodic table as a tool. It's about applying the principles of chemistry to everyday life and understanding why things happen. And I can pass these around. Some of the chemistry standards that I think are important, I'm just going to call note two, using the periodic table as a model to predict the relative properties of elements based on the patterns of electrons and the atom of energy levels of atoms. I know I had you at the periodic table. Apply scientific principles and evidence to provide an explanation about the effects of changing temperature or concentration on the reacting particles, the rate of which a reaction occurs. I'm pointing these out specifically because the standards do not change if we put it under a course that has a different title. These are chemistry standards, so we need to put them into a chemistry course. I also want to call attention to, you do not see the word stotheometry. You do not see some of those really big mathematical concepts. The way that the standards are written are to be conceptual. And so as we change our thinking and we bring this new course forward, we have to keep in mind that this is a conceptual approach to chemistry at the academic level. So I'm going to, you're getting a really sneak peek as to what is coming to the board and to the student achievement committee in the coming months. In chemistry, we are going to have two, well, we will have three levels of chemistry available to students. It will be the academic version, which is going to be titled Principles of Chemistry. There will be an accelerated version, which will maintain these topics, but will also bring in key concepts within chemistry that were not in the NGSS that will support AP, ECE, and college admissions. And then we will maintain our ECE and our AP level of courses. I do want to just point out that as an example of what this chemistry course is going to look like is unit one, is the radium pearls. In the early 1920s, 1912, 1920s, Waterbury, Connecticut was a hub for radium dial company, and they painted watch dials with luminescent paint that contained radium. There is an entire study that is out of Washington DC where they are holding those pieces and as well as where they studied the women that worked in these factories to paint those dials. Through this case study, our students are going to learn the principles of chemistry. What does it need to be radioactive? What happens to radioactive elements over time? They're going to look at the effects of radiation on the human body. What are the probes of radiation in today's society and how are those probes come to be based off of the chemical understanding that we've built over time? So this is really where we're going. That first unit is that case study of the radium pearls. The second unit is textile chemistry and looking at, you know, how do we look at the fabrics and the dyes, and how do I get a dye to adhere to a fabric, and how does that apply to, you know, your interior car fabric versus your sofa versus your shirt versus tie dye and so on. The third unit looks at safety and airbags and talks about chemical reactions and gas laws and how those are used in order to protect us in our everyday lives. And the last unit is that environmental chemistry. So as I pointed out in the beginning, that we had to have earth and space science as a component of our chemistry course, that is, those standards are built within that final unit. Questions? In this, in this current academic year, we ran a pilot, and our students were given the opportunity to take an environmental science course or a chemistry course. It is important for you to know that the standards within both of those courses were identical. So if they took the environmental science course, they were still doing those standards that I pointed out earlier. And if they were doing the chemistry course, they were doing that as well. So of the, of the, all of our juniors, 68% of them opted for chemistry, 32% opted for environmental science. Partway through the year, we ran into some significant trouble with the environmental science course. We realized that the number of standards that were being repeated in the environmental was significant. Our kids were doing the same thing that they were doing in their freshman year with a little bit of chemistry component added in. The second part was that you couldn't build in those chemistry concepts into the environmental studies without removing the environmental studies from it, or losing some of that, that robust environmental issue. The concert, like I was just saying, the context of those major environmental issues were lost, the standards implementation. And then the numbers and the types of standards that were embedded within the course made the course disconnected and unattainable. So we had to sit back and say, okay, what are the modifications that we can make to this pilot so that we can be successful in giving our students access to all 71 standards before they take the state assessment and they graduate, and that they can be scientifically literate adults when they leave Bristol schools? So we removed science, the environmental science, as the alternate to the third-year course, meaning that we could maintain a robust environmental science course that still dealt with environmental issues in, as an elective in their senior year or as a doubled-up requirement within their junior, not requirement, double up in their junior year. We wanted to streamline where the NGSS standards were falling within the courses in order to maximize their use and application. We also realized that we needed to have multiple levels for each course. I needed an academic and honors, or academic and accelerated version of physical science, academic accelerated in biology, and they needed very specific and discrete differences within the course. For chemistry specifically, as I said earlier, we will have the academic, which will be the principles of chemistry, which will cover all of those NGSS content standards, and the accelerated will cover those NGSS content standards as well as maintain those traditional topics that are necessary for post-secondary experiences in STEM. All of this information is also forthcoming to student achievement, I believe, in March and the board. These are the pathways that are going to be, that will fall for science. Depending on how students double up, if they're taking an academic path or an accelerated path, there are still multiple opportunities for science electives in their senior year or as a double up within their junior year. Can I answer any questions for you?
I'm sorry, but what is, is AP in that last one, anatomy and physiology?
AP would be any advanced placement science course.
The other quick question I have is when you explained to us that you implemented a, a pilot, when you used the standards in both those sciences, the choices that the kids want, 68%, and then the problems that you encountered with the environmental science piece. When you applied that pilot program, what was the performance like? Did you have the NGSS standards in the previous year?
So-
NGSS, sorry.
The standards were embedded within, in that pilot.
Yeah.
The way that they were mapped out, there was commonality between the courses, between the standards in the chemistry course as well as the standards within the environmental course. However, the environmental course also had a padding of additional standards. So that, it became really giant. Because if we had just made the, maintained the chemistry standards within that environmental course, we would have never actually been able to teach any environmental science. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Does it answer your question?
I don't know. I guess what I'm asking is, did you notice, although there was really good information in the study, but did you notice any impact to having to apply the rigor of the standards in the chemistry course and compared to the students' performance in the class?
I will have to go back and look at that data and-
Maybe we can talk about that when it comes to student achievement. You don't have to have it answered today, but that, I would be interested in knowing that at the student achievement.
I would rather not miss beat, and I would rather bring that to you next time.
Great.
Thank you. Any questions overall that we can have to answer?
Are there any repercussions if we don't adopt National Next Generation Science Standards? I mean, Common Quorum is kind of, we didn't have a choice.
It's the same as Common Quorum. The state has adopted NGSS, the standards that we need to meet. So we have to address these standards no matter what. It's, so it's what best makes most sense for the students that we have, putting those standards together.
So this all culminates in looking for a motion to approve the graduation requirements?
Yes, so, someone want to offer up that motion?
So.
Has been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been properly made and seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Any questions or comments on the motion?
Just a comment. Just thank you for that, and you know, just going to trust your expertise, and you know, I have all my trust in you.
No pressure. We talked about that.
The reason why we were asked about the performance is there is some concern when we move to this statewide rigor and standards that for some students, there, it created an even bigger gap for them to meet the rigor. And, but yet we, some districts struggle with having to adopt the rigor but have the same, you know, levels of support that they had before, which meant that they, there was an extra support for it to help those that maybe couldn't bridge that gap as quickly as others. So that's why I was asking about the performance.
The board was very generous, yeah, the board was very generous last year in your advocacy for additional support for this third credit of science. So you'll recall, we had to add an additional staff, a member split between both schools to be able to offer the third credit of science that is required. That was provided, and additional special education support at the high school level to support co-taught sections of chemistry so that we can help meet this, our students' needs. In fact, that's where we have our co-taught section, is within our chemistry class and not within our environmental science. So our students are currently within that 68%. That's good to know. Thank you.
Any other comments on the motion? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I don't believe we have any new business. Mrs. Bevart?
Moving down there.
Information. Start on my left, Joe. Commissioner Giantonio?
No information.
Commissioner Dubey?
No information.
Commissioner Bevart?
Just briefly, myself, Chairman Wilson, and Dr. Carbone attended a panel presentation last night at Shipman &amp; Goodwin about the achievement gap, which-
Yes.
Exactly.
Nice segue.
Yeah. And it really starts out with the opportunity gap. And we have a very large opportunity gap here in Bristol based on socioeconomic situations as well as ethnicities. It was very enlightening. I think they were preaching to the plier, but it's something that we really need to pay attention to and work very hard. I don't think that it's realistic to say that we will ever be able to close that gap, but I think we can make it smaller.
Commissioner Taylor?
Commissioner-
Hens. Start from the other side. Ways on Reports, Councilman.
I have no report.
Okay. Commissioner Hens? Commissioner Taylor?
I do. So last night, Green Hills held their K2 title one night, and over 200 students and parents were there. Parent engagement has been very large events lately. The Watch Dogs are having their annual father-daughter dance on Friday, the 21st, and also on Monday. I was actually, they were my students, so I was able to see these students. But the Connecticut Elementary Art Celebration was held, and Green Hills had two honoraries, fifth graders Caitlin Carbone and Lily Fogg. And about three weeks ago, it was actually right after our last board event meeting, myself, Chairman Wilson, Dr. Eater, I think, Spur was there, we all went to the Tunnel Hope event in the morning, where it's part of the Kids of Hope program that Green Hills is implementing. It was fun to see the kid. Basically, what we did is we stood, held signs as they were walking in the morning, and it was interesting to see the difference between, you know, the second graders who were like, yay, and the eighth graders who, including my own child who ran away without saying hello. So it was just a great event. Was it the Lost Boys? I believe what their name was, the famous YouTuber that all the kids seem to know, and they were, they were there and they were presenting. So that was a great event. when they were, they were there and they were presenting, so that was a great event.
Commissioner River.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Dubey.
I have two, if I can kindly share.
Yep.
Commissioner, as well, which I'll read first, and this is from Stanford School. Stanford School and the Bristol Boys and Girls Hope Together raised $281 in support of patients at CCMC. They sent boxes, no, this is dated, I apologize. We sent boxes of leftover Halloween candy overseas for the Treats for Troops program and received pictures back from the troops showing how much they enjoyed the candy. Also, the Bristol Boys and Girls Hope School Program submitted 15 entries into the New England Carousel Museum by creating an original drawing or painting of a carousel animal. Four students from Stanford School won awards. There was a reception at the Carousel Museum where students were recognized. And now I will move on to my liaison report, which is from West Bristol School. Today, West Bristol School celebrated Global School Play Day. The goal was to provide students with the gift of play without any adult direction. K through A students were engaged in creative and collaborative activities and played for the day. The Worthy Wolf Celebration recognized students who are consistently demonstrating positive behaviors as strong school citizens. We will kick off our Start with Power program and continue through the month of February with No One Eats Alone. Students will be working together to engage and include others while exploring new friendships.
Commissioner Giantonio.
I do have something from the Greater Bristol Special Education PTO. They will have their monthly meeting on Tuesday, February 12, and it's a presentation of safety in the Bristol Public Schools. Some of the topics that will be discussed, discuss are what will happen if your child school is evacuated due to an emergency or natural disaster? What if there's a bomb threat or an active shooter incident near the school? And when disaster strikes, how will you be reunited with your child? The group has invited Bristol Public School Director of School Safety Javier Rosario to help address the audience with these issues, and will also invited our other special guest speaker, People Services Director, Dr. Michael Dieter, and he will come and share some of the latest data for, on our Bristol Special Education student that's related to safety. Oh, sorry, that meeting is held at Chapter 126 Sports and Fitness Center, 47 Upson Street. The meeting is free, the public is welcome, childcare is provided by the Chapter 126 staff.
Commissioner Growalski.
I have none.
March 1st is Read Across America Day, so if you get invited, or if you're not invited, call any one of our schools and please go and read and bring your friends, it's a lot of fun.
And I just have one thing, we have invited Cindy Bombar to present next month. She's going to talk about the Bristol Technical Advisory Committee and its work, its mission, its goals, its successes and opportunities. The Technical Advisory Committee puts together business owners, particularly in the manufacturing sector, along with educators, our educators, as well as educators from our community colleges and workforce partners and other stakeholders that are interested in this topic. Manufacturers are looking for more students, and so how can we bridge that gap through our curriculum and through the opportunities for our students to see some of these job opportunities? So Cindy will come and speak for five to 10 minutes about that. I see Mr. Covino crosses away from me, and he's been very involved in this organization as well, and he, he gives him a lot of wise counsel on, and provides a lot of opportunities for our students at Adult Ed, so Cindy will be coming next month. Maybe you thought she was coming tonight and that's why you were here, but it got changed to next month, so we can look forward to seeing Cindy. If there's nothing else to come before the Board, I would like to turn the motion for adjournment.
It's adjourned.
Then probably you, then seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.